All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. It is now 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Bremen.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
And Counselor O'Brien will be arriving late.
All right. Thank you. With that, we're going to move into, we've got a moment of silence and then Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to allow the opportunity for all faiths and beliefs, the opportunity for silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
What changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Again.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to move into our Proclamations and Presentations. We've got one proclamation and one presentation tonight. So our first one is a proclamation proclaiming May 15th to 21st, 2022 as Police Week, and I've asked Ken to read that for us.
To recognize National Police Week 2022 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our local law enforcement agencies to include the Mesa County Sheriff's Office, the Grand Junction Police Department, the Palisade Police Department, the Fruta Police Department, Colburn Marshal's Office, Debeck Marshal's Office, and the Colorado State Patrol. Whereas approximately 58,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported on average each year resulting in more than 17,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifices, been killed in the line of duty, including five from local law enforcement agencies. Mesa County Sheriff Deputy Edward Innis was killed September 27th, 1906 during an inmate jail escape. Colorado State Patrol Wesley Rosette was killed in a crash on January 31st, 1951. Fruta Police Department Acting Chief Dan Dally was killed in a motorcycle crash in June 2001. Deputy Derek Gere of the Mesa County Sheriff's Office died after being shot by an armed suspect in February 2016. Most recently Sergeant Wayne Wyler lost his battle to COVID-19 in December of 2021. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 472 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2021, nine of whom were fallen Colorado heroes. Officer Gordon Beasley of the Arbatia Police Department, Sergeant Eric Shear of the Aurora Police Department, Officer Eric Tally of the Boulder Police Department, Deputy Sheriff James Herrera of the Denver Sheriff's Department, Deputy Sheriff Duke Trujillo of the Denver Sheriff's Department, Detective Joe Pollak of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Sheriff Clay Zachary Livingston of the Albert County Sheriff's Office, Officer Ty Powell of the Windsor Police Department, and Sergeant Wayne Wyler of the Mesa County Sheriff's Office. Their names will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial located in Washington DC this year. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2022 is National Police Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of City Council of Fruta formally designates May 15th to the 21st of 2022 as Police Week in the City of Fruta and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you, Ken. We've got Chief Kraus here. Did you want to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I did want to take the opportunity to briefly thank you for the proclamation and recognizing Police Week and probably most importantly honoring those fallen officers throughout the country and the state and particularly those local, more recently fallen officers. Dan Dally, Derek Gere, and Wayne Wyler, who were friends and colleagues for many of us that are here tonight. So thank you for that. It's an honor for you to mention them and recognize them this week. Police Week is a really humbling time for us. The generosity and gratitude that's expressed during this week is really overwhelming. But honestly, it's not all that different than what we experience every week of the year here in Fruta. We're very aware of how lucky we are to work in a community like this and have the great relationship that we do have with our community. So thank you. Thank you to the community. Thank you to the council, city leadership for all the support that you continuously give us and for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kraus. All right, now we've got a presentation from the Fruta Livability Commission. Shannon, you wanted to start that off?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Shannon Bossen. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and the Staff Liaison for the Livability Commission. With us tonight, we have Michael Hanley, the Chair of the Livability Commission, and also Dave Krasny, the Vice Chair of the Livability Commission. That will give you a quick update on some of the things we've been working on as a commission and also a proposed program that we'd like to offer up for the community, Adopt a Street and Trail Program for the City of Fruta. So with that, we'll go through this quickly and I'll hand it over to Michael and Dave. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you for allowing us a few minutes today. At our last meeting last month, the Commission members asked if Shannon and I could give you a quick update basically what the Livability Commission is about, but more particularly a program that we've been discussing for the last several months now that Shannon did a great job as usual to put together in a package that we'll present to you tonight. You may know that Fruta was made a member of the AARP Livability Community, Age Friendly Community in 2017. Now, as AARP says in their brochure, an age-friendly community is a community where people of all ages can live comfortably. So in 2018, in late 2018, the Fruta City Council actually created the Livability Commission. I believe it was actually an extension of a Advisory Committee, a Senior Advisory Committee that had been active for, I think, the previous 18 or 20 years. So in October, the Commission was created and then through 2019, the Commission met somewhat irregularly. And then we've had regular meetings in 2020 and 21. Although, you know, most of that time was just Zoom meetings, which made it a little bit difficult. But we did make some good progress. One of the things that we created is the Age Friendly Action Plan. I think this was in your packet. And if you haven't read this yet, please do go read it. It gives an excellent background of the Commission, AARP's Livability Initiative, which is an outgrowth of the World Health Organization Livability Initiatives. So as a member of the AARP Livability Community, I just want to let you know that Fruta has a composite livability score of 56. Now, this score is zero to 100. So at 56, Fruta is above the median for the United States. The composite score is made up of several metric scores. It includes housing. And actually, there's eight factors of livability that includes housing, transportation, open spaces, and so forth. And each of those categories, AARP assigns a metric score. And some areas where Fruta could improve on the individual scores are, of course, housing. We're at 49 for housing. And then health and community health policies. We're at 49 there, too. So the action plan actually identifies, you know, several areas where Fruta could make improvements in specific areas, particular housing, the healthcare and transportation. So when you read through this, you'll see some areas that, you know, we all need to work on to improve in Fruta. So two of the things, several things that the Commission has talked about and worked on over the last several months is the, what turned out to be the spring and fall cleanup days, where members of the community can come and deposit waste, whatever, at a central location, and then the city will take it away. Part two of that is an Adopt a Street program. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Shannon to give you some more details on that.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Yeah, as kind of we detailed in the packet, this is a project that the Livability Commission has been working on for, it feels like over a year now, probably longer than that, but yeah, due to the pandemic, it kind of held up some of the things that we were doing. So yeah, it actually started, one of our members, John Rodwick, I'm sure most of you know John, his wife Jean goes and picks up trash along K Point Six Road. And, you know, he brought it up one time and said, you know, it'd be a great idea if we could formalize or create an Adopt a Street program. So that kind of evolved into maybe we can do a spring cleanup, fall cleanup, kind of like we do at Grand Junction. And then after we've been researching what other communities do for an Adopt a Street program, we had a discussion. We're like, maybe let's create a formal program within the city where people can apply to it. We can have designated routes and trails that people can clean up and we'll kind of make it a more formal process like they do in a lot of other organizations. So yeah, as Michael was saying, I did a ton of research on how this looks in other communities. It's all outlined in the packet. Usually groups will apply to be a part of the program. That's mostly just to verify, you know, contact information that the group is a group and it does exist and they live in Fruta and they have the capacity to actually do the cleanup. And once they apply, they can pick a road or a road or trail that they can clean up. Our Public Works Department and our Parks and Recreation Department has identified 15 different segments that could probably benefit from this program. They're also in your packet as the last sheet. And from there, once a, once a group is eligible and picks a trail, they'll organize two to four cleanups a year. They'll call us two weeks before, whether it's a trail or a road or Parks and Rec Department or Public Works Department will give them, you know, safety vests, gloves, kind of materials you need, trash bags, and kind of help organize the cleanup. And then the next day, pick up any trash or debris that's been picked up as part of the cleanup. So yeah, it's a, it's a very exciting program. I know we're very excited to share this with the City Council. There's a minimal fiscal impact to the program, you know, mostly staff time. We do have our Parks and Rec Department, our Public Works Department, I mean, they will be responsible for picking up, you know, the trash that's collected the next day. We'll also probably purchase some vests that volunteers can use just to make sure they're always visual when they are doing these cleanup efforts. And also just having a staff member as a point of contact to working with the group leader for each group and kind of organize with them. So pretty minimal cost there. And also, one thing that a lot of other cities do, they do after a year of being in the program successfully and doing four cleanups, they recognize them with a sign that says, you know, this street is adopted by the Fruta Livability Commission, this street is adopted by Calhoun Cade, something like that. So that's something we could definitely work into the budget next year and I think would be good benefit to the program as well because that's something that people can be proud of. And of course, it's, it'd be a great program for the community because they can participate and clean up and should be good. Always happy to answer any questions from the City Council or if you have anything for Michael and Dave as well, we can answer those. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just had one question. So when did you, I guess when were you guys looking at rolling this out, like right away or is this?
Yeah, probably. How I kind of visualize it, we'll have all that information you saw in the packet, just right on the website. We'll probably publicize it on social media. Since we are creating this program, I am volunteering the Livability Commission to adopt our first street and trail. And we'll probably publicize that on, on social media and kind of have like a big celebration of the program. Once we do that, ironically, it'll probably be K Point Six because that's Jean's route as a member of the Livability Commission. But yeah, we'll roll that out and kind of work with groups. They can, they can do it. We typically expect, you know, a lot of these programs, talking with other organizations, they do two to four cleanups a year. As long as, you know, our departments have at least two weeks' notice, that should be good and we can organize staff time accordingly.
Well, that's a question. Amy?
How, how are you going to reach out to the organizations to spread the word besides social media?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. You know, in our traditional ways, we typically, you know, social media, we have a lot of other communication efforts that we, that reaches a lot of people. The City Link is one of our best ways to reach people. We could include that as in a future City Link, put it on our website as well. Also, a quick plug, I can't remember if Micah shared this, we're actually now right one portion of the Fruta Insider, which is a part of the nickel. So that's one thing we could throw in there and that reaches a whole nother audience, which we haven't had access, not that we haven't had access to before, but we can reach them directly. You know, the people that still read traditional newspapers and nickel ads and stuff like that. So probably publicize it as much as we can, but of course, too, word of mouth is always great.
We also have a good HOA contact list that we can, that we can let know. Not that all of these would fall within, but it's a good way to get the word out on something like this program for sure.
It's a great point.
The safety vest, maybe they can have something on the back, too.
Call our phone number. Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
I did not see that AARP report. I apologize if I missed it, but if that could be forwarded, be appreciated.
Of course, my apologies, Counselor Bremen. It is in a link on the cover sheet, so it's not as an attachment, but I will, I can send it to the group.
I missed that. I apologize.
Oh, no problem at all.
The only question I have about the AARP thing, too, is I was curious to, can we get scores from previous two so we can see the change in that?
Yeah, it's a great question.
That'd be great.
Actually, our score has been pretty much unchanged.
Unchanged.
Part of the network. And there's, there's definitely some areas where I think we could just immediately work on improving those scores because I'm not sure that we've given, you know, a lot of input to AARP on it would allow them to update scores in, in some areas. And there's definitely some things that we need to work on. One of the other things I wanted to mention is that as part of the age-friendly network that makes Fruta eligible to submit applications for the AARP Challenge Grants to do certain things. So, and, and, and we did last year.
We, we did submit an application for last year and also this year. As Mark will probably speak to, we submitted an application for a community garden at the Fruta Community Center on the South Side. So yeah, that'd be a great use of those funds. So hopefully we will get that. I'm not sure if we've heard yet, have we, Mark? Not yet, but they received thousands of applications. So sometimes it takes a little while to vet through those, but a lot of these community projects that we're doing, kind of addressing open space, our parks, communication broadband, I think just by getting those done, that will also improve our livability score, right?
Yeah. And starting last month and, and meeting this month and probably continuing on, the, the Commission started to look at ways that we could increase the visibility. The Living Commission, we need to increase our membership. So, you know, that's goal one. You interviewed someone tonight that is a potential new member.
She is going to be a new member, so.
And we have, I was just sent an email today of another person. So in the last three months, we've had a net gain of three new members or at least interest in sending in the application for, for appointments. So that's good. But if we can raise our visibility through social media and the website and so forth, I think we can provide even more input to the council on a number of things that we can all work on to improve the livability of Fruta.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any other questions?
There's no, you don't need to send it to me now that you put it out where it's here. I'm capable of pushing that button. Thank you.
Your finger still works, right?
I covered, but thank you.
All right.
It was found. So you're okay. Yeah, you're okay. None of us.
And I don't think we need a formal vote on approving the program, maybe just a head nod.
Are you good with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the council to listen to comments by the public. We do not normally take any action regarding these items. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? See anybody online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So our consent agenda are all items that are, and all conditions or requirements that have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They will all be approved by one motion. So with that, we're going to open it up to public comment on some, anything on the consent agenda. So would anybody like to speak on anything on our consent agenda? Any online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Are any questions or do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the agenda. Second.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got one quasi judicial hearing. It's for a new liquor license application, request to approve a new brew pub license, and we've got our Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods presenting on this.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk for the City of Fruta, presenting a new brew pub liquor license application. It was submitted by Dan and Michelle Collins, who own the Copper Club Brewing Company. It was back in July of 2012 when Dan and Michelle came to the city and got business, two business licenses. One was for Kettles Homebrew Supplies. This was when they were at 233 East Aspen. And they had beer and wine making supplies up front and in the back they had state, state-approved liquor licenses only that are called a wholesaler's liquor license and a manufacturer's liquor license. And these licenses allowed for them to have a taproom, which was where the Copper Club was for a long time. But now that they, they have moved to their new location on Mulberry Street, they would like to apply for a brew pub liquor license. They've submitted all the paperwork and paid all the fees to do so. And a brew pub, basically, the difference is, is that it, it does allow for the sale and consumption on the premises of not just beer, but also venison, spirits, liquors. And as part of the requirements for a brew pub liquor license, they, they will need to have at least 15% of their gross sales of food and drink has to come from the sale of food. And the State Liquor Enforcement Division defines food as, means a quantity of foodstuffs of such nature as is ordinarily consumed by an individual at regular intervals for the purpose of sustenance. Looking forward to that. So all the documents are in your council packet, but the two main things for the council to consider when approving a liquor license are, one, the character of the applicants, and the second one is needs of the neighborhood concerning the character of the applicants. Staff did complete background checks on both Dan and Michelle and those came back clear and they also submitted a neighborhood survey that was signed by 38 people who all said that they were in favor of the brew pub liquor license being issued. When I originally, well, when I did the council packet on Friday, I, I noticed that there was a something in the application that I hadn't noticed, and that was that the quitclaim deed on the property where they're now located on Mulberry. The quitclaim deed was in the name of One L LLC. And so on a liquor license application, the, the name of the applicant has to be exactly the same as the name on a lease or a deed that proves that they have possession of the property. So I did make it a condition of approval that, that Dan and Michelle submit a lease agreement from One L LLC to Moonlight Drive LLC doing business as Copper Creek Brewing Company. And they did get that completed and Dan brought that into me yesterday. So, so basically that is, that concludes my presentation. The recommended motion would just be to move to approve the application for the brew pub liquor license for Moonlight Drive LLC DBA Copper Club Brewing Company located at 153 North Mulberry Street. You don't have to say anything about the condition since that has been met. And Dan Collins is present in the audience tonight, so I will turn it over to you, Dan, if you have anything to add.
All right, thank you, Dan. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Nobody online? All right. With that, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does council have any questions, comments? All right, then do we have a motion?
I move to approve the issuance of a brew pub liquor license to Moonlight Drive LLC DBA Copper Club Brewing Company located at 153 North Mulberry Street in Fruta.
Second.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
In here, Dan.
Make sure you feed enough people with that. All right, you too. All right, with that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda and Mike was going to start us off there because we've got several items on there and I think he's going to cover a few just to get us rolling.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. We have three items on the administrative agenda tonight. And just wanted to go over the purpose of these items. The first, you're going to hear from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Mancuso, to give a brief overview of the Frost Master Plan, which is the Parks, Health, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan. As you saw in the packet, there's a write-up on the history of how that was created and the process that the community went through. And when that was updated or when that was adopted by council earlier this past year or last year. And then Sam Adkins, our city engineer, is going to give an update on the circulation master plan, another master plan that followed. Both of these followed the comprehensive plan update that was adopted in, in 2020. And that, and that's the purpose of those. A comprehensive plan provides the, the overall values, goals, priorities, and then basically directs very specific master plans in certain areas that, that are identified in the comprehensive plan. Tonight is for the, for those two updates, it's, it's, it's not our intent to go, you could spend an hour on each plan, but we've already done that when they were adopted. It's more to give a quick overview of what the plans are, maybe a few highlights and how we utilize those plans. And for the purpose of, you're going to hear us refer to these plans regularly. So, so those of you that were recently elected on the council, you'll, you'll hear us refer to these plans in many different ways. And when we are doing, when you are doing strategic planning, there will be a lot of reference to these, these priorities, projects that are in, in these plans. When we're doing our budget process this, this year for 2023, we'll be referring to those plans. But also wanted to point out that operationally, the staff utilize these on a regular basis, whether it's for review of projects. You know, a lot of times we get a lot of great feedback for the connectivity of neighborhoods or things like that, and they, it stems from these plans. Or when we're reviewing development projects and how they affect, impact, what, what would be required on the transportation system, it stems from the circulation plan or multimodal, so not even just transportation from, from a vehicle, but all modes of, of transportation. So just wanted to point that out and we'll have them give a brief update. The third item, our Planning Director, Dan Karas, and I'll probably join in, will want to give an update on a proposed ordinance from Mesa County and how it actually impacts or affects our urban growth boundary. So we'll have Mark come up and start with the Parks, Health, So we'll have Mark come up and start with the Parks Health Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan overview. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you guys for allowing me to present tonight. Mark Mancuso, Parks Rec Director. So it's very difficult to abbreviate this awesome document, so I will do the best that I can.
We have faith in you.
You know, I like to talk too, so I'll try to keep it under five here. Frost Master Plan covers the Parks Health Recreation Open Space and Trails. This plan represents what Fruta residents list to the side, I see as the most important ideas that will advance Fruta Parks and Recreation or services. So some of the sections, the introduction, who plays here, play in Fruta today, key themes and recommendations, progressing play, action plan and funding. Really what I'm going to focus on tonight is just kind of the key themes and recommendations that we have for the next couple of years and then some other priorities. So twenty twenty-two, you know, the number one theme that was identified in the plan was the Reed Park Improvement. Some other projects that we have taking place this year, I wanted to highlight as well. The Fruta Bike Park will be getting a facelift. We have some new ramps and jumps and everything that will be going in there, probably in September. We're looking at the Trail Crossing Project under three forty near the state park. FCC improvements, we have two grants submitted for the community garden. And then we've had some of the mountain property meetings. So we're addressing the mountain properties and these are all things that have been identified here in the plan. So Reed Park, we actually have we applied for the grant in March through GOCO and they had limited funds. So we were asked to come back in August for that again. So we're trying to prepare the RFP to send that out and be more shovel ready for this project, hopefully showing that urgency to get the grant funding from GOCO in August. So with Reed Park, we're looking at new restroom facilities, a shelter, existing basketball court with multi-sport court, new in-ground skate park, new playground, handicap accessible picnic pavilion, and then electrical throughout the park for farmers market. So so pending grants that we have out right now, we're going to apply again for GOCO for nine hundred thousand. Skate park project, we have the letter of intent in and I have a few questions that I need to get back to them to see if we are awarded the ten thousand dollars. That's a mini grant. When others see that the skate park project have funded us, then others will jump on. So I think that's just kind of that, it's the Tony Hawk Foundation, so it's a pretty big foundation. So US Soccer Musco for the mini pitch or the multi-sport court. That grant, I'm working on that one currently as well. And then CPRA and Play Corps have a fifty fifty match opportunity. I think there was eight million dollars available for grants for the playground. So that one has been submitted and we're waiting to hear back on that one. So Fruta Community Center AARP, we have a forty-seven thousand dollar grant out there. Last year, they received twenty-four hundred applications and they could only fund, I want to say like fifty or so. Like, so it's going to be a big ask, but we we submitted for that. And then next fifty is another organization for seniors and that next other age group. So we've got forty-seven thousand dollars for that. So if we get both of them, we'll have a phase one and phase two. So pretty excited about that. The Trail Crossing, we met with CDOT and they liked our idea, so we're working on proposals to to get out and get the planning done on that. And then FCC upgrades. We're going to be closing the pool here in October to get the new filter in. The filter was designed behind all the plumbing, so we have to take all the plumbing out to pull the filter out and then put the filter in and put all the plumbing back. So it's going to be quite a chore. So we're working on that, trying to minimize the amount of time that the FCC is closed.
Is that just the pool closed or is it the full?
Just the pool.
Just the pool.
Yep, yep. I think we've narrowed it down to like a two-week timeframe that we can close the pool. Twenty twenty-three projects, we're going to continue on the North Fruta Desert Trails. We have a couple of grants out there to help build those trails, so hopefully we can get close to the thirty-two miles completed in the next couple of years. The big one was Little Salt Wash Park Expansion with pickleball courts. So very, that one is very high on a lot of people's list, so.
Do we want those pickleball players around our parks? Just kidding, just kidding.
Be careful there.
Hopefully, they can help with some funding. Little and Big Salt Wash Studies, hopefully constructing the Trail Crossing and then the Raptor Road Trail Design. It's just kind of what was in the plan. So the the master plan does have a lot of diagrams, maps, a lot of information that we utilize when applying for the grants and submitting different documents for these. So medium priority projects, lagoon development, the planning phase, circle park, pedestrian and landscape improvements, civic center memorial renovation, Fruta Community Center study. So we are running out of room and programming space, so we would like to do a study on that to see what we can do to increase some of that space there at the FCC. Parkland acquisition in the southeast area, design in the southeast area, Snooks Bottom, Fruta Riverfront Master Plans, and then the mountain properties. So and here's kind of a drawing from the lagoon's property, just kind of the plan, what they were looking at. But no, no real document on that. Low priority, again, lagoon development, design and construction phase. So Sixteen Road and L Road Etter Park, design and build, so that's just future park.
Mark, I'm going to go ahead and claim ignorance. What is the mountain properties?
So mountain properties are a couple reservoirs and Enoch Lake, forty-five minutes south of here. And so it's City of Fruta owns that property. There's one lake that, or yeah, one reservoir that has some issues with the dam right now. And we've actually applied for some funding to help us plan and design how to fix that. So we're really happy with that moving forward. So but if you haven't been to the mountain properties, I heard they are amazing. I have not been there yet either, so.
We did that like two years ago. We did that as part of our planning. We went up.
So those are, we have, we have three reservoir or four reservoirs total, including Enoch Lake. Enoch Lake is surrounded by private property, but then the other three reservoirs are surrounded by public lands and and city-owned land. Originally, the city, the reason why the city owns those properties and water rights were it was the original water source for the city. But until the early eighties, it wasn't enough to provide enough water in the early eighties. So it's it's by far not enough currently, current day, and there's no way to get it here anymore. But it is water that's providing irrigation water to Clay Park, about fifty homes there. And then there's also recreational practices that are fishing and and next to trails up there that we own. So we'll probably be talking quite a bit about those when we get into strategic planning and kind of next steps. It's it's while the city's been excellent at achieving many, many goals over the years, that's been a goal that's been on for decades. I think that is still yet to be achieved, so we can on how to move forward with that.
Great opportunity with NRCS to help fund the design of that area. So we're really excited. We didn't have that funding at the first of the year and had a meeting. And next thing you know, we had some players come to us and let us know about some opportunities for funding.
Yeah, that's that's actually really exciting. I mean, it's been a challenge. We've we've been seeking funding to how to repair a two million dollar dam repair. When you're when you're constantly battling higher priorities in town. And NRCS, a previous former council member, Amanda Ewing, connected us through her work. And they've been funding a number of projects in Utah, but not many in Colorado. And they really looked favorably on this project as something. So they're going to provide funding for design and help us kind of start getting to those next steps and have some more opportunities for funding to. So so I think we've we've actually got some movement that we haven't had to be able to move forward, so that's really exciting.
And some of the other things that are in this, Trail Priority, so they've identified, you know, high priority trails, Little Salt Wash from the FCC to Sierra Drive, Maple Street to Little Salt Wash Park, Colson Street Trail off, I want to and then the trail extension there from Raptor Road to Riverfront Trail. So I went through that very quick, but thank you guys for allowing me to present.
Yeah, when are you going to get up to mountain property?
Got that fixed, yeah?
Yes. You know, I, we tried going a couple of weeks ago, but the roads were still pretty muddy. And so they didn't allow us to go up there, so it's definitely on our plan. We've had CPW, they want to go up there with us. It's kind of funny how there was no funding and not a lot of people reaching out to us. And then once they heard the funding, we have more partners that are jumping in and wanting to help us out with that. So CPW actually wants to take us up there for a half day to see how they.
Great place to go in July, August, when it's really hot down here.
So and this is, I think, one we'll talk about in our planning too, is like if there's things that you haven't seen. When you guys are going up there, staff, or if we get some bait set, we could do that.
Yep, we got staff fishing pools.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, before you go, I know you and I talked about Civic Center and I noticed up there that there was one Civic Center for the Memorial Area. Is that the park in general or is that just the?
Just the memorial.
Okay, so we're not getting much luck on, it seemed like everything but the Civic Center Park was kind of getting addressed. Is that correct at this point?
That's what the plan kind of laid out, right? So I think as other opportunities come up, we can look at those, but currently just working off the plan. That was presented for us. That's where we're trying to focus on those priorities first, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No power. Seems like maybe ten years ago.
Or Mark knew I was going to say something.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is an update for the Fruta Circulation Plan. We had an update back in October twenty-sixth of last year. For those of you who are on the city council, but we obviously have three new members. This is, I don't think Mike said mine was supposed to be brief. I think he just said more.
Oh, I did hear him say it's going to be brief.
Super brief.
Super brief. Super brief, I think.
I think it has something to do with the questions afterwards. So we've been working on the circulation plan since twenty twenty. We got it adopted through city council on the fifteenth of February of this year. There was some public engagement, a lot of data gathering and whatnot. What really came out of this was four recommendations, pedestrian enhancements, bicycle enhancements, multimodal street and intersection enhancements, and then some policies and and programs. What also got implemented or or listed in the plan are some short-term, long-term and medium-term projects for all of those those categories. So with our public outreach, we met with the consultants from the comprehensive plan, the Frost Plan, the land use code update and and got input from what their public engagement was and and tried to tie the plan together with the other plans. We ended up having an online survey. There was an interactive online map that ran back in like February of twenty twenty-one. And then in July, we had an open house at the Civic Center and then we had a booth at the farmer's market. We got over three hundred responses on the online survey, so that's that's really good. I mean, a lot of times people are not as responsive as far as getting getting their input to us. We didn't have great success at the open house. I think it was just a, it was a Friday night. We provided food. But the following, yeah, that was, that didn't even bring them in. But we did, we had a lot of people. It was pretty much a steady stream of visitors at the booth. And it it stemmed a lot of because, you know, they were there for another reason, for the most part. We did tag-team that with our Fremont Street design, so both of those were going on at the same time. And that kind of worked out well because the consultants were not local.
And Sam, if I could just add in, I want one thing to point out when you're doing, when we're doing a master plan for circulation is it's it it becomes much more technical than the results of a comprehensive plan. So one thing that's nice to rely on is that we had over four thousand people participate in that comprehensive plan that really guides how these policies should be developed. And then so this this master plan in particular, kind of like the land use code, gets extremely technical on how to write policy or write, you know, create a plan to actually achieve those broader goals and and desires of the of the community, less so of, you know, it's 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 less about, you know, like myself or an average resident designing a road or designing an intersection or things like that. But and more and heavily focused on data and then the overarching pieces from the comp plan. So engagement, while it was low on some of these pieces, it was fairly small questions in comparison to what led to this plan.
The other part of that was that there was so much public engagement on some of the other. Too much public engagement. I I don't feel like too less. I think it was right, but I don't take it the wrong way from that perspective.
I thought you were going to say this was so exciting that, you know, we should have had.
Well, yeah, what's exciting this summer, not exciting. So some of the key themes that came out of the public outreach, and and I don't know that I need to read all of these as they are in the cover sheet. So these these were listed, but you know, there were, there was comments related to getting from the north side to the south side from a pedestrian or bicycle standpoint. Confusion at the roundabouts, whether it's the circle or Highway three forty, missing sidewalks, improved maintenance on sidewalks, education on how traffic works, how pedestrians and bikes interact with the motorists. Those kinds of things came out in in the outreach. So one of the things that they started with was just developing some of the existing conditions. And like I said, the consultant reached out, they went through what was going on with the land use code update, the Frost Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, the twenty forty-five Regional Transportation Plan, and then back to the pedestrian bicycle circulation study that was done in in two thousand eleven. Some of the items that were listed, you know, some of the bigger items, there's a bunch of projects that are small projects that could be restriping something, reconfiguring an intersection, those kinds of things. But some of the bigger items were some of the trail crossings, roadway plans, and like I said, various intersection improvements. Right now, we have an existing crossing at Little Salt Wash of Railroad, Highway six, interstate. You know, that's the barrier. We've talked about for the longest time, a parallel crossing at State Highway three forty. We have that crossing, but it's just not a safe crossing for a bicycle. The rail's too short, may not be that wide. We've talked about, do we widen that, increase the rail height or build something separate? And then, you know, there's a real need for crossing at the Fruta. And then, you know, there's a real need for crossing at the Fruit of Monument High School and the Fruit 89. We've had discussions with CDOT. They are now aware that there are essentially Frogger activities out there. Fence is cut, so kids that don't have the ability to drive to school or don't have a way to get a ride. They're crossing the interstate, the railroad and the highway. And that, that is happening. And you can imagine, because there's a lot of people live, well, or there's a number of people that live in that 18 road area. And so it just, it's a long way to come back to just end up heading back that direction. So a pedestrian crossing there is, is part of the plan. And then some of the, the roadway plans, the first two are more or less CDOT items. One is US six corridor improvements from 22 road to 15 road. Talking to CDOT, they're talking maybe next year, 20 road to 22 road. And what that would mean is more or less a three lane section. If you're, if you're eastbound, that, that traffic, if, if someone's wanting to turn left, they're going to stop in the lane. You're not anticipating that person stopping. There's a lot of rear end accidents that occur there. If you're westbound, a lot of those people that are hitting those driveways and whatnot, you know, there is an eight to 10 foot shoulder, so they'll get over. But there's a lot of accidents in the eastbound direction that CDOT has identified. And, and I think we all know 20 road is a, is a poor intersection that was supposed to go out for bid. This year, they got railroaded, I guess. They didn't get all the, all the permits in place in order to make that happen through the railroad. So that's probably a next year project, but that'll be realigned and signalized and, and take out that conflicting left from River Road and 20 road that always happens when someone has a camper coming back from, you know, somewhere, right? And you're having to make that left turn. And then the other two are Fremont Street that we've been working on that design and 19 road and then various intersection improvements. These are those crossings that we're talking about. The existing one kind of up there in the northwest is the Little Salt Wash Trail. In addition to that, talking about Snooks Bottom to Lagoon property, from lagoons to Snooks Bottom. And then we have the existing crossing at 340 with the proposed secondary parallel crossing. And then the crossing at the Route 89 and the high school. And this is what the consultant kind of came up with for that crossing at the eight, nine or the high school. You can see it's kind of, it's pretty thin line work on there, but you'd have ramps on both sides to meet the ADA requirements. You'd also have stairs for those that are just going to go straight up. And then you'd cross the interstate, the railroad and highway six, and that would create that safe crossing for the students.
That would be great. How wide is that? The walkway?
It really wasn't identified. I bet it would be about 10 feet, maybe 12. I, I could imagine there being quite a bit of users at one time, you know, like peak times or any other time, it would be very pretty sparse. But everybody's going to school at the same time, eight, nine and the high school start at the same time. So that, I see that happening. Then, you know, you got people that would want to go to Pizza Hut or, you know, the dollar store, any of that, that you otherwise don't have. So how do we use this plan and what is it used for? The, the first one is planning for capital projects, right? So like I said, sidewalks, trails, intersections, bike lanes, roadway and improvements. Those are all part of this plan and not all of that's going to be constructed through development. And so we have to plan for some of that with, with our capital projects. The other thing, and Mike mentioned it earlier, is development. So, you know, when you see a development that's being proposed on a collector road, we've already identified in our comments, we go, we go to the plan, we go to the map and it says, that's a major collector. Okay. A major collector is a 70 foot right away. We've got that established. So that development will construct the half street improvements and dedicate 35, which is half of that 70 feet, 35 feet of right away. So if this document is guiding us in, in telling us what we need to do at various locations. And this, this is basically the roadway classification map that says, okay, it said the blue lines are, are collectors. The greens are minor collectors, the reds are arterials, and then anything that you really don't see that's like gray background would be a local street. And we have street sections that are identified for each one of those. So this is what we would call our, our arterial and there's a couple of sections there. One's the enhanced travel corridor on the bottom. The only real difference between the two is a 12 foot wide path on the west side. And that's identified for 19 road. It would be a five lane section where you either have a median in the middle with turn lane or you have a continuous turn lane. And that's 56 feet of asphalt. The major collectors, like I was saying, which Ottley would be one, Pine would be one. That's identified as 70 feet of right away and then 44 feet of asphalt curb gutter sidewalk on both sides. What that does is allow that five foot parkway. We have some others that are classified as minor collectors, which is this section. And the only difference is you don't have that five foot parkway. So you end up with 60 feet of right away, the same road template. You just don't have the extra five feet and those are a little bit minor, well, obviously minor collectors. Than the major ones. And then we, we have other street classifications. The, this would be in industrial zoning districts where you'd have 36 feet of, of asphalt that would create enough movement or room for turning movements, et cetera. And the, and you don't have the sidewalk. You do in Greenway, that's a separate issue. But other industrial classified streets, this would be the, the street section. And then we have our standard local that if you live in a subdivision that's from probably the late 90s on. This is the standard local section. It's 28 feet of asphalt, mountable curb gutter and sidewalk and 44 feet of, of right away. And that just allows flexibility for driveway locations where they don't have to go back in there and take out the vertical curb. There were, there were some signal warrants and four way or always stop warrants that were checked as part of this. They, they identified Jurassic Avenue and Highway 340 and the intersection at Aspen and Plum for a signal warrant. And they also checked the all way or four way stop control at Aspen and Plum as well and Paper and Mesa. If you use the MUTCD criteria is what they did, if, if you look in the appendix, you'll see all the, here's where we fall, here's the criteria. We fall short. So none of those, the, the two signals are not warranted at this time. It was more or less a check to see where we are with, with those intersections. And nor did the four way stops meet the, the warrant criteria for the MUTCD. There are some reductions if, if you actually were to look at the, the MUTCD. I know you're all excited about that. But those reductions are, are populations under 10,000. And so if you were to actually look at the charts and go, hey, wait a minute, we have, we have numbers here that we, we don't fall within that category anymore. And then some of the programs and policies that weren't necessarily a plan, but it's more policies developing and we, and we have worked on the wayfinding, but wayfinding and information signage, sign, sidewalk maintenance and rehabilitation. And those of you been on the council, maybe you're aware that we, we did up our sidewalk replacements from 30,000 to 100,000 this year to try to knock out more of these deficient sidewalks where there's stripping hazards or ADA issues so that we are in compliance. And then, you know, providing some of the, or having a program to provide amenities along some of the trails and multimodal corridors like pedestrian lighting and bike parking seating, trash receptacles. And then providing that educational enforcement component so that people, I, I will give the example of we've got some of those push button crosswalks. I've seen kids just go right through there. I don't even know if they know there's a push button there to use, you know, that would, all of a sudden you have the flashing lights as the motorist, you, you go to stop. But, so I think, I think the kids especially, and I have four of them and I know they're culprits. That there needs to be education on the safety and, and not just disregard some of the, the laws and rules that keeps them safe.
Made the buttons a little more interesting.
Or a sign that said, don't push. Questions?
I guess that was it. Yeah. I was, I didn't, I didn't.
Cut off.
I didn't get formally put questions.
Yeah.
Would you let him know how to add that last slide? So he knows.
I could do it right now if I needed.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Sam? Did everybody read that appendix?
Well, that's, I would, I would encourage you to go through the document. I, you don't have to read everything, but you know, the, the main part's really not that long. And then there's a bunch of appendix stuff and a lot of the stuff in appendix is from some of the other plans. It's just, hey, this is what we used as guiding.
I have a comment. I've noticed a couple of sidewalks that have been redone that I love. I hope it was the city who did it and not the owners of the homes, but like one is just right across the street here. It curves around the tree. And then also on, on paper, same it cur, it's beautiful. It's sweet. I sound cheesy up here, but like, I just so much appreciate how it looks and how it functions with the tree instead of like, because it was a root problem. Instead of like deciding to cut the trees down or whatever, like it's, it's beautifully done. So I'm.
Well, thank you. We, we had that ability or we have that ability in downtown where we have the detached walk. And we've done it a number of times where it's, it's a touchy subject to deal with the trees.
We are Tree City USA.
Oh, right. The tree cut down because of the sidewalk, but the paper one must have heaved probably eight inches. You know, the tree just lifted it up and this one was bad too.
But they look, they look fantastic.
Well, thank you. I'll tell Chris, he's the one that got that work.
It's, it's probably worth noting that in, in Fruta, for, I don't know, probably many, many years. I'm not sure when it started, but the, originally the, the sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owners, but we have an 80 20 program. So what we do is when we identify sidewalks that are in need of repair, we notify the property owner and let them know that we have this program and we can take care of the entire project as a large project that we're doing. You know, sidewalk repairs all throughout the city. At one point in time, we contract that out. And then the city covers 80% and what their 20% would be. So sometimes that catches people off, off, you know, surprised like, oh, I'm in charge of the, the sidewalk that's there. But that's actually been pretty well received. We used to do it where it was only as a, they come to, like a resident comes to us or an HOA comes to us and, and applies. And the challenge was we weren't getting all the highest priority sidewalks that way because maybe they weren't aware or they, you know, weren't thinking to, to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. Half the time people didn't know about it and we didn't use the funds. I think that was part of the.
Correct. And we, and that was when we were only budgeting 30,000 or less, when we started doing this and then we, we, you know, that, that gave us the opportunity. We saw that we could do much more. And, you know, a lot of these are, it might be a couple hundred dollars or something in that 20%. I mean, it depends. It depends on the length and all those things, but, but that's, that seemed to go well. We've been able to do much more.
Well, it, like when I first got here and I'm less than eight years, it was 50 50. It was a responsibility of the homeowner to get the contractor, meet our standards, pay for the whole thing. Then we reimburse him or her. And, and so that's where we were not getting the.
That's a good point.
Hey, that could have been two or three grand and that sidewalk's fine to me if you're the homeowner. And so we've migrated to where we're almost forcing them at this point so that we're getting the highest priority. We, we were getting that situation where property owner A has a problem, adjacent property owner B has a problem. A is willing to pay the 20%, B's not, B might've been in worse condition than A, so you left that. So we're trying to push a little bit harder on making the, that part happen. So you might get some phone calls.
All right. Any other questions for Sam? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we don't open it up to public comment on these items. Thank you. Yeah. Sam will ask, answer it back there. All right, Mike, we're moving into the third item, the Mesa County ordinance and licensing. How Dan's in charge of this one.
Yeah, Dan's going to come up and give an overview of this.
I don't know how brief this was going to be.
There goes brief.
Have you seen this item?
Well, while Dan's passing this out, I'll just mention, this, this isn't something that comes up too often. But when, when our partner agencies, similar to what we do, when the county's going through an ordinance update. If you remember at the, the last election, there was a ballot measure that the county had on, on the election about a marijuana grow being allowed, you know, in the county. So if you remember that, and that, that measure passed. And now the county, because that's passed, now they've, they've written a draft ordinance for how they regulate that or where that can take place in the, in the county, right? And, but Dan was recently, the planet, the, our planning department and other city planning departments receive a request or receive the opportunity to make comments on the, on county ordinance changes, just like they have the opportunity to make comments on our ordinance changes. Dan noticed that the cover sheet that went to the Mesa County Planning Commission, and this has already occurred and already been, been recommended by the planning commission, that it did not address the fact that this was in the city's growth boundary and not just ours, but Grand Junction's growth boundary, Palisades growth boundary. If you remember the last meeting where we covered, you know, the city boundary and then the growth boundary and how typically when that develops, they annex into the city and then their city. That's how we draw our, you know, very specific line. So they have a, a, they have a zone that's called AFT. And that is what our, that is the zone that goes into the city's growth boundary currently. So in that growth boundary, right, it's currently Mesa County until development occurs, like a subdivision, you know, comes in and they want it. So, and this ordinance is written essentially that it applies to all of AFT with no notion or any regard to the city urban growth boundary. So Dan and I, so he's going to give a little bit more detail to that. And then we met with city or county staff yesterday. Because today they scheduled their public hearing with the boards, the board of commissioners for July 7th or June 7th. And after that meeting, we felt like we need to, well, when we first saw it, we felt like we need to give you an overview. And we think we need to give more comments than just our staff comments, and especially after we had that meeting. So why don't you give a little more detail on, on, on the specific, unless I covered it. But, and then, and then we'll talk about what, what we're, what we'd like to get your reactions and thoughts and how we proceed in our comments to Mesa County.
Well, I suppose first and foremost, Dan Keres, planning director for the city of Fruta, there's three attachments. One is the cover sheet and the staff report that Mesa County Plan Commission received. Text amendment that essentially is in front of you and then 11 by 17 since last time. Went through some maps. We kind of struggled to see, you know, sort of the nuance that is on the screen. So I figured I just printed out, this is essentially a zoning map that encompasses all of the valley and some of the planned for areas in, in Whitewater and Mac. You can see on here, this like sort of grayed out municipal limits that represents in the center of the city of Grand Junction. And then in the lower valley Fruta and then Palisade on the eastern portion of the, of the airshed or the valley floor. Just want to make sure that everybody realizes that this like kind of backdrop zoning classification is AFT. You know, like, so that the land mass. You know, like so that the landmass that encompasses that zoning classification is a is proposed to be just a buy right use to cultivate marijuana. There's two descriptions that are in the materials that I I handed out to you. There's cultivation and then there's processing. Both of which would be allowed in AFT. It's just the cultivation would be just a buy right use just allowed. And then the processing would be a conditional use permit process. So. Why that's important is that that essentially is on the edge of our community with with the exception of some urban residential reserve developments, which are like those one acre lot developments that we've all seen. That took place in the county, like the cultivation of marijuana could be directly inside of our growth boundary and you can kind of see that represented. With our future land use map, which is the second map that I've furnished you all with. Why I think that's important, you know, just from our perspective is that, you know. We spent an awful lot of time putting these plans together and try and make sure that there's some continuity with like how growth takes place and that no one. Sort of investor gets penalized, you know, from having to bring utilities or, you know, having to, you know, upgrade the. This system because we have not seen an orderly sort of development pattern take place. We certainly feel like there's some fear of that, you know, being a little bit more amplified if there's. The cultivation of marijuana within our growth boundary, not only from a nuisance standpoint of receiving complaints, but also. Just from the fact that, you know, that's that's a little bit of a different cash crop than, you know, the the traditional sort of agricultural operations, which is why we've, you know. Requested and furnished comments that that there's just some acknowledgement of our urban development.
Yeah, I would just I would just add that. Not only is there, you know, decades of long term planning for the specific purpose of, you know, growth and how and where we grow and and that feedback from the community. But there's there's significant investment and and a financial investment from the community. So when the wastewater reclamation facility was. Was created, you know, as we talked about, it's it's anticipating everything filling in within that line based on, you know, somewhere in that four to eight, you know. Houses per per acre, you know, and we. If if within the so it's less about, you know, of course, the voters approved cultivation in the county, but. I I think it was a surprise to us and 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 also that we weren't, we had to find it ourselves, not 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 brought to us to discuss that it could potentially. Be in the urban growth boundary. But it sounds like from the feedback we're getting that, you know, they're they're moving forward quite quick, you know, the the hearing scheduled, the only time a change could have happened would be in that hearing at this point. Our request, you know, essentially from staff was to to have some consideration of, you know, yeah, maybe an AFT. But as Dan showed in the first map, AFT is probably the largest zoning land classification in the county, right, for including all the cities. But. To exempt from the urban growth boundary. Grand Junction submitted a comment related to maybe a quarter mile from from their border. They have a little little different situation because they have some shared areas with the Prosego, you know, sewer plant. Palisade was unaware at the time, so hadn't, you know, so we we essentially. I think our our main ask is what questions do you have about it? Are do you have concern, shared concern as we do? And and should we write a letter that would be signed, you know, by the mayor in addition to just what we have submitted from staff or not? So that's kind of what the ultimate ask tonight is and discussion we'd like to have. I I guess what I'm saying is our our concern is, you know, if. We have cheaper land, we have cheaper water and this will this being just wide open in AFT. There's a concern, we have a concern that if some of those properties were, if if this occurred in some of those properties that are like right next to the eight nine school or right. If if you remember the map, when you're going up nineteen road and there's kind of that gap to the west of nineteen road and we were talking about in the past, how there's we see development up. Near, you know, Ottley and K and nineteen, and then we have a lot of development happening and and ultimately it'll grow up. But if you had this occur right in the middle and then we don't have development that comes in that helps pay for some of the infrastructure, we're still on the hook as a city. Not only, you know, that could increase sewer rates across the board by not filling in over time, but we're on the hook to improve nineteen road. But it's but we're not getting those impact fees or anything that that kind of goes into doing that because the that would stay county, you know. Hopefully that's making sense, but so so that's a concern. You know, we got some questions back of, well, is this speculation? We don't know where they'll go and. We're just concerned because, you know, when you're closer to the cities, you're closer to services, you're closer to, you know, improved roadways, you're closer to a number of things. And in that respect, so our our ask is is that they consider the urban growth boundary. Right now it hasn't necessarily, it doesn't seem to be considered as AFT in general, whether it's in an urban growth boundary or not.
In addition to our octopus parcels, you see the.
Yeah.
Zoning classification that's interior to our city limits. That essentially.
What road is that on, Dan? Is on Pine?
Certain that haven't really, I mean, we've let development occur that would preempt annexation and zoning. We haven't just gone and annexed our lives. Some people would like to remain under the ag exempt. There's fear of taxi. I mean, there's just things that people have concerns about. The annexation is forced upon them, but, you know, I mean, there's a significant amount of, you know, land that's interior to our city limits. It would be subject to cultivation, likely not processing, but cultivation is.
And and we realize that there's going to be times, there are times where, you know, different partner agencies agree to disagree. I think our our concern is that in the consideration of the decision, it really hasn't been discussed about. How it could impact or not an urban growth boundary and what that means for long term planning, what that means financially. And again, on the flip side, of course, you know, voters approved it, voters across the county approved it and they're saying this classification. But I don't know if when we were voting, if we're considering thinking it out in the county or, you know. I don't know if people are considering all the borders and where that comes and how all that works when it gets down to the ordinance level. Of AFT, which is such a broad classification.
Is there any indication if the county is open to adjusting?
Oh.
Requested that yesterday. Think we sort of agree to disagree with that, but. I don't fault them for that, like that's not.
And that's your request is just a little bit more.
Well, our request is to, you know.
Have the conversations that never took place. Is that your request?
I think our request is to acknowledge our development, our urban development boundary and to disallow it within there.
Okay.
Subdivision in the county. Prohibited to happen at eight under ten acres without annexation. So it seems like there's sort of one hand acknowledgement of the master plans and the future land use. And then on this side, maybe not that same consideration.
So if they were to acknowledge our request, does that negate any of the, you know, mandate that they need to go forward with? I mean, can they make that exemption?
I don't I don't believe so. I mean, like, you know, if you think about like. Sort of sales of, you know, sales. And just experienced like, you know, they went through a pretty lofty process, you know, and ended up, I think, on six licensed facilities and like so. And we think asking the question and then sort of defining that like, you know, they are their regulator.
Right.
So like, you know, have the right to, you know, account for things and and sort of allow it in certain areas. But I I do feel where they're coming from with like the fact that like AFT zoning classification is very broad.
Right.
But but it doesn't seem like like it's getting the same acknowledgement that our future land use map gets with regards to other development.
Yeah, I would add that, you know, a lot of times the arguments in these, and and they may hear this from some residents or not, it gets into more of the nuisance, you know, or the smell or things like that. We're really wanting to just stick purely to which we believe they have the ability to do. Consider not allowing it in the in the urban growth boundary to acknowledge it similarly like other development that they don't allow that they would just outside of it. It's both in the same classification of AFT and just and 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 state the reasons because of the long term planning, because of, you know, the financial impacts and and those types of things. So if that's something you're interested in, our we'd have to provide those comments before their hearing on June seventh. And then possibly we could even have Dan attend and and speak. We, I think the staff expect that we'll probably, we'd probably be doing that at this point without your. Supporter direction, we would leave it at the con the staff comments that we've that we've already provided. So tonight's really to see if if you'd be interested in us. Stating those those facts, having the mayor sign it and 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 submitting that.
So what are our options here? Like? What's that like? If we don't want it in our urban growth, are we at their mercy and we're just basically coming to them going, please don't do it in our urban growth? Or do we get to literally say, we already have this map this way? We don't want this. That's just our hard line. I mean, not saying that that's what we would say, but it's that on the table.
That's a great.
Just trying to find out what our parameters are of where where we are as a city, what we can do to extremes on both sides.
Right. I I mean, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but they. To that question, James, it's essentially they are the they do have the zoning authority currently. So it really is, I was asking. You know, please don't do that in our urban growth boundary for these purposes.
In our nicest.
Right.
And what about the interior pieces?
Sure, that's that's the scary.
Would that be?
I think we would have to have some conversations about.
Yeah. See.
We would just do that.
What and what Dan's saying there is.
And that's going to be.
We've we've taken, yeah, we've taken the approach.
Fruta, and that's who we represent.
Yeah, and we've always taken the approach in those. Essentially, it's when they come. You know, they're choosing the annex in like there's a change occurring and they want to get on sewer or something like that. So. It is something we could do, but it's 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 not a, I mean, it's not an easy thing as well. Yeah. Typically, you would initiate the offer.
Like, couldn't it be, I mean, just to talk about it in layman's terms, I guess it would almost be like if we could have these put in a situation where they're like a PUD type of a deal where. We and it sounds like we don't have the ability to do this, but if we could say we want to keep our zones the way they are and case by case, if they want to bring them to planning and bring them to council. We could see like if somebody wanted to do agricultural grow in their property. That might be some way that we might want to approach the county and say, hey, we want to have some kind of say on what's happening with our boundaries. And I don't know how that looks like, but if. That would be nice.
Yeah.
I I just, I don't like us not having a say.
Yeah.
And I don't like us having to be kind of forced to make property owners be annexed because there's the that's a really popular thing that we have. That so there's a lot of people that aren't, I mean, I know your family even has some. Property. I know we've had conversations about that with people in the community. So it's a tough one.
Yeah.
The other thing is. Your constituents as well, you know, that might or might not, the brevity of the situation. Or or if that's even being acknowledged, you know. Read those materials like it seems pretty open for cultivation, less open for. For processing, but processing marijuana processing facility can still land in AFT.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the reverse argument to this is it's been voted on and voting has consequences and this is a consequence of voting. So people didn't vote. For the county, right? I mean.
I would like to suggest for me what feels most comfortable is for us to ask you to go back with a very bullet point case. Like all the reasons that you've listed, including an education piece, because Mike, I think you're right. I think probably when people voted. The the map wasn't laid out. It says, when you vote this way, this could affect this place where you live and this place where you live and whatever. And I think the county would, it behoove them to. Get clarification on what their voters really were voting and just do a little bit of education and ask like our city does all the time, even when something is. You know, getting the public opinion is always a big deal. And of course, voting is a is one piece of public opinion, but it's not always the whole picture. So even with a kind of suggestion, if we could even pitch in to, you know, help help fill that. That community outreach just to get the feedback. I feel like. If after the voting and then you get some public feedback and indeed. What I'm saying is wrong and people will be happy with that and they already knew what they were doing, then so be it. But it does seem like you're saying, James, too, like we're being put in a very difficult position, I feel.
Yeah, I think I'd be surprised if they did any sort of outreach. I I think it's a great idea. I I would doubt I doubt they'd do it. I I think. Especially if we could get Palisade City Council and Mayor also on board and if both ends of the valley are saying, oh, hang on, we're part of the county, too. Can we have some communication about this and get our representatives and Palisade representatives there to bring it up at that meeting? I I think that's our fastest course of action, just to just to say, hang on, let's pull the reins here a little bit.
Too bad nobody brought it up at the municipality's dinner and we're all together.
That was interesting.
And we also are having a meeting with.
But it'll be after it's done.
Yeah, I know. So I mean, that's.
Too late.
Yeah, we always say that with our public hearings, they don't necessarily, they can push off that public hearing, too.
Right.
So I mean, that.
What are what are your feelings on it, Dan? I mean, what are you guys getting from them? Do you feel like they're just, wow, wow, Wes, let's do this? Or are they looking for honest opinion from us going, we would like a buffer zone or we, you know.
It's.
Where are we on this?
It sounds like they're just moving forward and will likely approve it at the June seventh. But but I can't speak for the commissioners, their staff can either, but that's what it sounds like. They had a briefing on it yesterday and then they scheduled the hearing today, I believe. And as you know, once hearings are scheduled, and and this is legislative, so I mean, if you all called commissioners and and say that's that's totally fine, it's not a quasi judicial. Process. But I I the only thing I would point out is the whole reason, so the argument of it was, you know, and and we heard this yesterday, it was voted on, so they're looking at, we're just going to apply it to AFT. But the whole reason they're doing a process now is because it was voted to be approved for grow in the county. Now they're this is their public, this is the public process to define where, right? So they've had it with the planning commission and then they'll have one hearing with with the commissioners essentially. And this is the this is the opportunity for people to weigh in. And I think I think it's our opportunity to. Again, we can't, we can't force it, but we can, we can say we we'd like it not to be allowed in the urban growth. But if if you're not willing to do that, we we'd like to be part of the decision making when it's happening within that. And, you know, we'd like to, we'd be happy to discuss further, whatever. I mean, but. It sounds like, I mean, it's very likely they'll they'll vote. So I think we need to, we need to give very clear feedback. If we give feedback and and not expect that for sure that it'll get postponed or, you know, for further discussion, I.
It's a lot easier for them to ignore you guys than to ignore two municipalities councils and mayors saying.
What so what's just to not as devil's advocate, but what is the benefit to us? So we've talked about what we could take as an extreme situation, but what what do we benefit from this? Outside of it being that the county voted it, do we get tax dollars from this? I mean, there's nothing here outside of us giving away at this point, really.
Like any other crop, like they you can choose that that's what you're going to, that's what you're going to cultivate and there won't be an application process or anything. It's.
There'll be a site plan.
Yeah.
Site plan. Okay.
It's a it would be administrative.
Is there state? I'm guessing there's state regulations they have to follow. You know.
You know, I'm going to make the crops, like if it's hops, who cares, right? If it's marijuana on most levels, I don't care. But it impacts our long-term planning and we're planning to grow smart. It impacts the financial, uh, like it, it changes the, the game, the, the, the way properties are valued and stuff like that. So it, it really could have a negative impact on the way we've all been working together for years and years.
I think you hit on something.
From any other crop.
Yeah, any other crop.
On the federal level.
Well, not only that, but can some, the same zone, somebody can't come in and go, I want to grow corn in the, in this, in the urban growth area, right? So this is the only crop that you could literally come in and do in the, after this, if they passed it, right?
Yeah, they could, they could do any, any sort of.
Yeah.
Do anything.
At this point though, even if it was in our urban growth area.
Yeah, right now.
Right now they can.
Right now, you know, and that's typically what's happening, right? It's various, and I, I think, James, that's probably if I were going to play devil's advocate, would probably be their biggest, well, how do we distinguish between one crop over another? We already allow crops. But our thing is this is a new use that's coming in, typically any new use that's coming in has, we're just, we have concerns that introducing this new use as broad as they are, takes away that future planning. I mean, I, so what I could suggest is unfortunately, our next regular meeting is the same day as there, and it's after their hearing. If you, if, if you'd like, we could work on, we could put together a draft and we could bring it to the workshop and then we could get, get a comfort level from you all. If you want us to submit that or not, um, and we could, we could further discuss it there. Cause I, I don't want, it sounds like there's enough kind of thoughts and questions. I'd hate to take a stab at a draft that you're just saying, okay, you know, put this in. So we could bring that to the workshop next week and get, get a, you know, get your feedback on it. Feel free to reach out and ask questions even of them. Or if you have questions of us, we can try and get more information leading up to that. I don't know, Dan, if you have any suggestions with that.
Do this for every.
Right.
No.
I think the concern is more of the, the cash benefit of the crop, because value is more, like if you look at corn or other things, the, the value, the sale value is a lot higher.
And farmers don't buy cameras and security systems.
Yeah, there's.
Watch their corn.
Right.
I'm not worried about corn, I'm not worried about corn getting grown right next to a school.
Would you actually have the same concern if it was any crop, because it's actually still affecting our plan, regardless of what crop.
It does still.
Being grown there now, though. It like that.
Right now, that's what that land is, right? There, there are fields of various crops or maybe not a crop, maybe nothing, right? And then when people choose to develop it in any, in any way, then it, then unless it's a 10 acre or more development, they're required to do, to annex into the city and do this.
Other difference is corn is not a controlled substance. I mean.
I think though, for me, that's, that's what I was looking for, because if you can, just to play the other side of the coin, if you can go in there and you can grow anything, I can kind of see the argument. I, I thought, I was kind of looking at it a little bit differently, but I, I am a little worried about, you know, somebody having property in the middle of town that just because it's not annexed at this point, because they've owned it and their families owned it forever. And then, you know, right here, we've got a huge pot field. I'm, I'm not against growing pot, but right in the middle of town, I mean, if that's the situation. So if there's anything that we can do to try to keep some sort of say on stuff, it does kind of behoove us because of that fact that it is a controlled substance. I mean, it is a little different and you know, that is.
Hops make alcohol. I mean, you know, I mean.
It's true.
Go ahead and start chewing on.
20 years from now. I mean, 20 years from now, this probably, it probably will be just a normal, regular thing, but we do have to think about our citizens right now.
Isn't, it's less about the substance and more what Ken was saying, it's about our, our plan and the, and the, not disregard, but the complete lack of communication. Or, or intentionality of our plan and Palisades plan, and Palisade pot's legal here, it's not. So it's, and we're both going to be saying the same thing, like we're all on the same team, people, can we communicate with each other? And, and can we have a say in how this is going to impact our municipality? That's the main message.
Right.
Sure.
If somebody growing an alfalfa field or, or hay for horses is going to be significantly different, like than somebody, some company coming in from out of town.
And that's.
Building a big pot farm. Money, that it's never going to become.
Very similar to the, the hemp farms, like on a grander scale and, and there is a lot of money. Yeah, this is a big, it's a big deal.
I think especially if you're trucking in.
Right.
Not all of these are gonna, in my opinion, are gonna go to processing facilities within the city of Grand Junction or within, uh, basic county. Like just don't see that happening, you know, to serve six pot shops.
I could see somebody in Denver or something having a big processing system already going, well, we could buy 50 acres down in Loma or down in Bifruta. You know what I'm saying? And.
The water is cheap.
And we could just grow the heck out of it and just bring it on up and process it.
I mean, that's.
And that's scary.
Exact example that we use.
Well, because they're going to buy up the property, I mean, it's just smart business for them at that point to buy up their property. And then what does that do to our property values? And what does that do to our affordable housing and things? So that is absolutely 100% against what we're trying to do right now.
With you, surrounding property values would decrease.
Well, there'd be less inventory, yeah. So it would go up because there would be.
Trying to sell your property that's right next to a pot processing or marijuana processing.
I'm, what I'm saying is that there would be less property out there that could be developed into homes. So if that property goes away, there's going to be less property for subdividers to come in and buy and build us more affordable homes as we need them. So our, the inventory is going to go away. We're not going to have as much inventory. If somebody comes in and buys right in our urban growth development area, buys up to 50 acres, it's right there. And then, and then they're not going to come in and go, oh, can I subdivide this? They're just going to, cool, we're going pot.
All right, so go back to it decreases surrounding.
What, it decreases those people out there, but it isn't help for housing.
Yeah.
I, I think for the property, the housing goes down.
It's an operation, you know, I don't know if that's what it's going to look like. It's suggesting that it's a very different agriculture.
Yep.
I think it has merit to, to consider.
Well, and I don't, I don't know that I disagree with your hypotheticals, but I think the letter needs to stick with the facts of, you know, inter-agency collaboration and that we need, that we need a lot more communication and stay away from hypotheticals.
Grand Junction said one at a quarter acre boundary, correct?
A quarter mile.
Quarter mile rather. I mean, all three.
I'm good with that. I mean, that would.
Ask or, or have concerns.
The boundary, not from the, it's from city limits.
Yeah, that's not far.
Yeah, it's still not, but something, I mean, we need something.
Alright, so it sounds like.
Yeah, forgiven.
Is, is that if it's approved, then it's going to be staff or administrative review for all of these properties, is that correct?
With the exception of the processing is.
Right, except the processing, so, right. So the cultivation, no matter what, they could put it wherever they want. They just have to fill out an application and.
Can we ask them to?
If they meet all the code, you may not like it, but it's still.
Well, when you guys are talking to them, can you ask them to make sure that the, that the specific areas are kept to certain sizes? I mean.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, geez, these guys, yeah, something, I mean, because there's nothing to stop these massive big companies that are making a lot of money to come in and buy up. Why not? I would, if I was them, I, they look at what these idiots just passed. Let's go in and buy up half their freaking property and just start growing all around this whole city. And they're make a lot of, I mean, that's an extreme case, but it's, they've got a lot of money to do things like that. And this is opening the door for that.
It, it sounds like what you suggested, bringing a draft to next week's workshop to. Feel good or not about.
If you have friends.
It is a great idea.
That concludes my.
That concludes.
So the other question they'll have is, I'm willing to go to that public hearing too, based on what council, to support what council decides as well. So, um, and I don't know if we're, Mike, are you going to reach out to Palisade or have you guys already?
I have to, to their manager, yeah.
Okay, so I've, maybe we could get Greg to show up as well, because I think that'd have a little more weight to.
Would there be strengths in numbers that was just more than you?
Right.
What time is the hearing, their hearing now? Wait, it's the same day as ours.
Right, but it's in the day, it's in the morning. They do theirs in the morning. Because it'll be the same public hearing as what we have, you're going to have public comment. So again, it's all going to weigh in. So the other question, I guess for staff is that if whatever we talk about at our workshop is having some paperwork or documentation that we can submit as public record as.
So wait, we're going to have a workshop before this?
Yeah, so in one week.
You guys put together some good talking points that we could maybe come to that workshop too, and we could kind of brainstorm around. And then when we all approach that, the public comment there, we can have specific points that maybe Heather goes up, she talks to this point. And then my, Joel goes up and then he takes on from that point. And then I go on and I take on from that point, so that we come at it with kind of a coordinated effect of why, what we're seeing as a city council in Fruta and why we wouldn't particularly want that. And I mean, and maybe we might want it. I mean, I'm just saying as we brainstorm that, but maybe that would be a good way to approach it. And then at that point, if you guys could talk to Palisade and then show them what we're looking at doing, you know what I'm saying?
So bring, so bring to the workshop a draft, you know, comment letter from the body, from the council that we can go over at the workshop. But then also talking points for, you know, whether it's individual conversations or speaking at, at the.
Yeah, and then we can see who can really go and who wants to kind of talk on certain topics. And then that way, we're not repeating ourselves, but we're also touching on all the topics that we need to, so that we could come at them like, hey, we're really looking at this seriously. And this is how we're really approaching it. And then almost after that, maybe you guys could catch up with Palisade after the workshop that you've had with us and go, look, this is what our council's thinking about doing. This is what we're looking at. This is what our bullet points are. What are you guys thinking? And if we can coordinate with them, because it probably seems like us and Palisade are probably going to be the closest type of allies on it.
Yeah, they basically have the most similarities in, in the way, the way the AFT hits our borders, so. Sure. Okay, great. I think that I got a clear direction for that, so.
Semi-clear. All right, we're moving into city managers' report.
All right, mayor, members of council, just a couple of items here. We received a notice that we were awarded a $1.7 million grant from CDOT for the South Mesa Street project. That's part of, many years ago, the, the city went through a, uh, essentially a, a full downtown improvement plan, which if you remember, most recent improvements were the bulbous on the intersections of Peach and Mulberry that created outdoor seating for a number of businesses, but also increased pedestrian, you know, abilities and things like that. Part of that plan had South Mesa, which we were successful, and I'm going to get the dates wrong, but sometime in the 16, 17 timeframe, we received a Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Grant that paid for the designs. We had actual, we have actual on the shelf construction drawings for taking that same plan where there's diagonal parking down South Mesa. So basically from the circle, uh, south. And, uh, we had worked with those businesses at that point in time, designed it where it also replaces a clay sewer line underneath. One of the few, or I'm probably saying that wrong, I think it's an orangeburg sewer line. That's one of the older lines that we, we would really like to get replaced. So we, there was a new opportunity that came up with CDOT and we applied and, and received the funding. It's, we're estimating that to be somewhere above 2 million, probably what we submitted was a 2.4 million and they, and there's a match required. So it's a, a share of somewhere around 70, 30% split. I think it's not exact 70, 30, but, and, uh, and, and so every expense gets split that way up to that 1.7 million from CDOT. So we just got that award two days ago. We're excited for that. We have, we will be presenting to Department of Local Affairs next week on Wednesday and Thursday for our broadband grant, for the middle mile grant. And then also for our H2S sewer grant, and we're requesting, and that's a large, those are large, both, both together would be over a million dollars from Department of Local Affairs. So we have seven minutes to present, seven minutes for questions, and, uh, we should find out a couple of weeks after that. So we're, we've, we've, we've had a lot of success in the past with those groups and we've been working with their staff in preparation. And then, uh, I wanted to share my screen here for the last update. And I just wanted to, to bring up, let's get this bigger. All right. So I gotta read it too here, unless, so I wanted to just, these can be changed, these can be, but we've talked about a lot of things. We have, we have a lot on, on our plates right now as, as a city. So I wanted to kind of go over what we had, um, tentatively planned for the upcoming meetings with you all. Also, as part of our strategy of getting to the point where we're strategically doing strategic planning in that June, July timeframe in time for, to have good direction as we start building a draft budget to bring back to council by September. Whoops. So. Of course I hit one button and it took 10 to get back there, but, um, so next week, a week from tonight is, is, is our scheduled workshop. And, and I kind of want to get some feedback because I also don't want to overload discussions because, uh, for, for any of the meetings and, and, but we, we were tentatively planning on having the consultants present the feedback. They should have enough time by then to have, um, you know, the survey ended Sunday for the Mulberry Street. There's been various engagements, so putting that together so they can come present it to, to staff and council at that workshop. The bulk of that meeting, we were really looking, originally looking at is talking about housing and there's a lot to talk about with housing. I know you've sat in a number of meetings, but to really lay out kind of what our next steps are. Um, and you're, and you have an executive session tonight with Butler Snow, our, our hired attorneys for, to discuss affordable housing, as noted in the agenda. But to start to talk about where we're at with EPS, what our next steps are, where we're at with the technical advisory committee, various strategies, various options, and get some feedback from, from you all, because we have not had that discussion yet since the election. The other two items here are pretty quick, uh, just quick overviews for, for some things that we will be preparing for future meetings. The annual proclamations is something that you might've heard at a previous meeting, but we have a process for people to request proclamations from, from the city council. And then they go to a workshop and you decide if you want to, want to put those proclamations on, on the, on a future agenda. One of the discussions we need to have are what are the ones, because it's not just by request. I mean, these are your city council proclamation, so there could be proclamations, you're not waiting for requests, but you want to do a police week proclamation every year. You want to do, so we would, what we would do is bring the ones we've been doing, whether they've been every year or just in the last few years, and then have a discussion with you all on, okay, which ones do we want to keep on, which ones are we just leaving for requests? And the, and, and then we have, uh, so that we can, we can identify those as we move forward. And that was something the previous council basically said, probably should just talk with the, after the election to, to, to review. So that's kind of what we have on there. My only, my only hesitation is Mulberry and housing, the two are, could, could, could take, I mean.
Well, Mike, I'll interrupt here too, because we, we've noticed over the years that once you hit over three hours, nobody's going to focus. So we have to be careful not to overload.
So we could, we could also have the consultants, another thought with, you know, another thought with the Mulberry piece is we could have the consultants present at a regular meeting, like come, present the results, could have some discussion. And then of course, schedule a workshop to discuss further. I mean, it's not something you have to, it's definitely not something where we're wanting to receive information and make some big decision right then, right? So.
What's really good for them to present to us?
Yeah, so we, so we could, we could take that off the workshop and in the first meeting in June, have them present the results. And then we could discuss at a later workshop.
Makes more sense, because then we could have a little time to think.
Digest it.
Then have a workshop with them after that. That, that to me makes more sense.
That, does that seem to be good for everybody? Cause I, I. That, does that seem to be good for everybody? Because I, I, I think we're gonna take a chunk of time on housing and need to just almost sooner, because there's decisions to be made sooner than I think there are for Mulberry, so.
And then you're also adding on this other one for the Mason County.
Well, they're just gonna bring us the letter and you're gonna sign it.
Oh yeah, it's always that easy.
Yeah, it's always. Never that quick.
Like that would be quicker though than the Mulberry.
Yeah. All right. Now, we don't have to do this because fifth Tuesdays are sometimes just a beautiful thing. But, so we don't have any normal meeting scheduled on a fifth Tuesday, just like a second Tuesday. But a possibility would be, do we use that time for some team building? Follow, any follow-up questions you may have from all the trainings. I'm gonna send you the link for the CML training that was yesterday. If you might have received it, they were, but okay, you did if you're registered. So you know, just after some of that sunk in, there's a lot coming at you right now. So just a moment to do that. Maybe an initial brain dump of just some like, hey, I want to, when we, when we talk about strategic planning, I want to make sure we're thinking of this or this or this. Just, just so we can kind of prepare for that next session. And then, you know, a good checkpoint of any needs for other future discussions, things you're hearing or things like that. So it wouldn't have to be a terribly long meeting by any ways, but it could be, we had talked about maybe having two nights or something where we do strategic planning. And I was trying to think of what's some of the stuff we could do that doesn't take a lot of preparation, but will help us in preparation for the another night that we schedule in June or July where we really dive into what are the strategies and priorities we want to get into. So that's just, that's just a, a proposed, you know, thing. And just before you answer on that, looking at what's to come after that, we still have some updates before our strategic planning actual session. So that June 7th, of course, we just talked about having Mulberry presented. We'll have an update on our sewer plan and then we'll have an update on pending grants and capital projects. What projects we've completed, but mainly projects we're starting, we're still in the budget this year. So that when we start talking about next year and years ahead, you have an idea of where we're at fund balance wise, all those types of things. That's why in, at the second meeting in June, the third Tuesday, we, there, and I don't want to get into details of TMDLs, but the county at some point, I don't know if this is gonna be the meeting, but there's gonna need to be another update on where they're at with this big process that we as a whole county are working on and helping fund with, you know, and, and with the state. And we're guessing right now it could be the 21st, but it might, it, it depends.
Are we not gonna not be here?
Oh, the, we are going to, so we, I, I said that wrong. It's the 20th. Yeah, we moved that meeting. Yeah, you're right.
CML is up and.
Yeah, that's a Monday night. We did move the meeting from Tuesday to Monday already.
I, I do remember this.
Yeah. And then June 28th, our regularly scheduled workshop, Sursa did agree there to come in person. That's when they could come and do the norms of conduct and kind of just procedures. Part of the training yesterday, when you, when you see that, talks a lot about being very specific. It's not specific enough to just say Robert's Rules of Order, because we don't quite follow all the details and that's a real, that actually can be more complicated than, so just, just walking through that. We talked about that at the training. So they can come in person and walk through that on the 28th.
Are you gonna have cake at that one?
We were just talking about moving the Mulberry workshop to that after we heard from them on the next workshop, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, we would have to.
Play into that.
Yeah, we would have to decide. The other option we have is to utilize, well, not if they were presenting on the seventh, but, because this is when we're talking about Mulberry presented to us.
Maybe we have them do it on, I don't know.
I tried to get them for the 31st, but with Memorial Day weekend, they were not able to travel over here for, for that day. But you're right, we'll have to figure out when, when the right time, you know, if we have a lighter meeting, we could schedule a special meeting for that. We could. I don't think you want to wait till like an August workshop. That's way too far out. Or I mean, a July workshop, but this is, this 28th workshop is gonna be hard to schedule with them. That's, that's the only challenge. Some other things that we have to, that we do need to schedule are tours. So that came up earlier, but tours of the city shops. And these would not be during a normal meeting. We just schedule times that would work. Many of you are probably very familiar with the community center, so it depends if we want to do that, but mountain properties, wastewater reclamation facility, and then lower valley fire would like to, would like to, you know, and have you all tour their new, their facility as well. And then of course, we discussed at the last meeting, just touring the city itself and looking at some of these areas where development is occurring. Of course, our strategic planning, other, I'm not, I didn't bring this up, so we try and schedule it all out. I just wanted to put it in front of you and get any reactions. I can, we can reach out with some doodle polls for some of these special meetings or like the strategic planning sometime. But I think we made some changes here. Are there any, any just initial reactions or, or, or comments that you want to get out right now? Aside from, we'll try and start arranging these with you and identifying some of the dates for tours and strategic planning. And after we hear from Mulberry, that, that I think we can really schedule, okay, when are we gonna, when are we gonna prioritize this when we get that presentation on the seventh?
I think the big one is the fifth Tuesday of this month.
Yeah, we do.
Do like team building at that, or I mean, to me. Building kind of me feels like not at a workshop by definition, team building and workshop.
We could.
Have to meet here for that. We could.
Yeah, this could be, this could be part, I guess.
31st is complicated for me in general and James won't be here, but if everybody else is gonna be here, I will be.
Why don't we, why don't?
The three of us are already gone, so I think.
Why don't we not do anything on the 31st?
Let it be, what did you describe it as a glorious thing?
You know, you don't get many of them.
Why are you taking away our glorious thing?
Especially me, because my Tuesday nights are all.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't get many fifths.
Somebody wanted planning commission.
What we'll do, what we'll do is, we can, we can find a time and, and we'll do this offline, not now, but we'll find a time for that strategic planning. And we'll just build in enough time where we do pieces of what we have here on the 31st. And I think it'll actually, as much as I want to get that strategic planning going, if you're okay with it, I think we're gonna be looking, it, it would be not. We're gonna hit that 4th of July, but probably sometime soon after. That is what we may be looking at, only because by then we'll have enough under our belt that we won't have to kind of refer to things. We will have covered all the main things that will go into strategic planning. That, having that norms of conduct discussion on how you handle decisions and how you, how we walk through prioritizing things is, is really gonna be, I think, a help before strategic planning. So I would just suggest we, we scratch the 31st and we look at mid, sometime in that mid-July timeframe for, for the strategic planning. If you're okay with that, and that'll give us, that'll give us some time to plug in some of the other pieces that need to happen. And we can, we can send you a doodle poll or something on when, when you have open times for that strategic planning, because it'll just, we'll just throw out some, some dates, but I got feedback last time that it's probably like a late afternoon, evening thing, not an all-day morning or probably like evening, night is what I was hearing, so.
I think our strategy with a full stomach.
Yeah, we'll start.
Copper club, because they're offering food now.
You know, I think that's a great suggestion.
And cornhole.
All right.
So what, I hate to keep going back to that, that May 28th workshop, but it, I feel like we do kind of need to get the Mulberry thing kind of going, because if we're gonna not, the way we just moved it, we're not gonna workshop that until June 28th. If we have them present on the 7th.
Yeah.
It's pretty fresh, like maybe we should get to that. Yeah, and I know a lot of people would like to know what's going on with Mulberry and I think putting it off isn't really
Sure.
The greatest thing. So can we revisit what that looks like on May 28th, having them do the workshop and then? No, what was the, the workshop? The first original one? No, no, that.
It's next week.
Yeah, that one. The 24th, sorry, I said the wrong date, but that's when you originally had it.
Yeah, we were planning, that's where we, we could do that. You know, honestly, we just learned some information on, I think, you know, the Mesa County letter, the proclamations. Those could be very quick. So I mean, we could, we, I, I assume.
Make them quick.
But this, is there a rush to do a new proclamation at this meeting? Can we just take?
No.
Other option is you can send that out, the list out. We can have it ahead of time and you say, I agree with.
If that's ahead of time.
Right. Yeah, if we get all that information ahead of time, then we're prepared and.
It's our homework.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say ahead of time and we could cover that easy in a reports and council reports and action at any meeting following that.
Even if we could have the Mason County letter ahead of time, so we can kind of process it ahead of time would be great.
And then this employee handbook, family opt-out, we'll, we'll, we'll put that at a different time. Don't worry. Time sensitive as we thought it was, so. Yeah.
And you already have them work to come in May 24th and talk to us about that anyway, right?
We were already planning on that.
Right, let's just keep it then.
I think that's a great suggestion. Then we don't.
I don't want to get too far out on it. It's so fresh. Then the community just did all the talk about it.
Perfect. Because that's gonna turn into, I mean, that could easily turn into multiple discussions, so the sooner the better.
We need to start it. Yeah, it's gonna be a few weeks, I'm sure.
Okay, great. I've got it. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, thanks for that quick report.
Oh, no, sorry.
He did fine. I kept, I kept him going.
We need, we've gotten, we, after, we've received, we've, we've gotten, I think, three of the iPads, three or four. We love to collect the ones we haven't, because what we're doing is we're getting rid of that general, we're getting you your unique, you know, so that passwords and unique usernames, so that updates occur and all the things we addressed at the training. So if you're able tonight, and you can leave it to Shannon at the end of the meeting, we can get them back pretty quick and we'll get, we can get them to you.
By 10, right?
He hand-delivered mine at the coffee shop. I'm just saying.
Pretty good service.
What?
I had to come get mine. He hand-delivered mine at the.
The other, the other option would be after the, the other option would be after the workshop, if you don't want to leave it tonight, because then you got a couple of weeks before, you know, you're.
Didn't Deb, you, you ordered us some, some stuff too, right? Do you already have that in? The keyboard things, those aren't here yet, right? Oh, could you guys put in your order so we can get those done?
I don't need a keyboard. I'd like that microphone replaced for our guests. Money for my keyboard and buy a mic.
But for real though, like Deb said, she was gonna put an order. I, I would prefer to just get it all done at once. I can do, I think that fixed and that.
Why don't we, why don't we try and, we'll plan on collecting them next week and we'll have those ordered so we can get that done, so.
Who else do you need to hear from, Deb? Yeah.
Mine's done. Well, mayor, mayor pro town, I guess.
Yeah.
Just do the same one I did. Just, just do the same one if everybody just, who else wants them? You need, let's just get that done.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, good.
Anything else, Mike?
We'll collect them after the workshop, then. We're done.
All right, thank you for that quick report. We're moving to council reports and actions. We're gonna start, let's start with Heather tonight. All right, well Heather's done. How about you, Amy?
I did Heather's. I went to the, what is it called? Arts and Culture. That was super cool. That'll be a fun, that'll be a fun one. Um, so they, they talked. Hey, planning and zoning. So they talked about a lot, actually. They are talking about, or they've created this fruit arts and culture scholarship, which is super cool. So they're gonna be offering a scholarship to multiple applicants. They were discussing how to spread the word to find applicants for this scholarship. The suggestion was made to contact the chamber and the two marketing coordinators, our communications people. They also talked about the roundabout art. They, I guess they've been working on these sign pedestals that kind of detail what the art in the roundabout is. There was some confusion about those, but they got that all worked out and the expenditure was approved for the board to pay for those and the concrete and the powder coating and Jeff Bates is building the pedestals for those. Fruit of Made event, so they're doing this really cool thing at the newly converted church. Where they're going, going to interview local fruit artists and did this like video production, yeah, documentary. Sounds like a really cool project. Again, they were talking about how to contact and get engagement for that and get artists to come. The music park, they've kind of set that project aside for a time, the site that they were looking at. It was not gonna work, I guess. So they're kind of holding off on that. They've decided they have other more important things to focus on and that that'll still be a thing that they're gonna be working on, but it's just not gonna be top priority. FCC and the rec center art, so like the displayed arts that you see when you go to the rec center and here, well, and I don't think it was here before. Where was it? Was it at the hospital? Yeah, so they used to switch. So now they're talking about doing it at the civic center and the rec center. And they haven't had any since COVID, but they're gonna start that back up again. So they're going to do three-month terms, so they'll, they'll jury the artists and rotate the arts through. Be super cool. I also visited, I've met with a lot of the directors, just to kind of get to know who they are and what, what they do for us, which was super cool. And I did a tour of the public works, which is really a neat space. We have a Fanta, yeah. And what awesome, man, our city is in really good hands. I'm very reassured. I mean, I just kind of take for granted how smoothly everything runs and you know, you really, it's pretty cool that we really don't know what goes into it. Yeah, so that was really cool. And I definitely want to do a tour of the, you know, the treatment plant and I'd really like to get that scheduled. What Kim said that, you know, the, the director out there is very passionate and he really likes it. So I would definitely like to get that. I think, I think I'd put that on the higher end of the tours that I would like to do, just because it involves, you know, affects a lot, like it really, it really affects the quality of our living. So, yeah, but I think that's everything. I didn't, we didn't have a planning and zoning meeting because it was graduation. Thank goodness. So we got to celebrate our kiddos. And Ken and I had kiddos that graduated.
Yeah.
I was not able to go to the, my first GRVTC meeting, but I did meet with Dana a few days after and she sort of, you know, dumped everything GRVTC on me. So, so I got briefed on that, that role. They canceled the May meeting. I also I'm on the Color National Association Board and they're with the Monument or helping put on the color or Preserve America Youth Summit, which is gonna be, are they doing something with the city of Fruta?
They are, yeah. We're doing a couple of things with them. One is to actually go toward the, be able to see the old Fruta Bridge. And then, and then we're, we're also participating in a couple of other pieces with that group, so, yeah.
They're bringing youth from all over the state.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Multi-agency, teaching kids about the natural world, preservation, cultural preservation. And I think they're from lower socioeconomic, they're like kids.
And I, I think our historic preservation board is, is doing some tours with them as well.
Yeah, so it'll be a cool thing, June 6th to the 9th. Is Cavalcade? Okay, yeah, yeah. So they're gonna be, you see a lot of kids in. Okay, so they're going to be you see a lot of kids in Fruta that that week of June. And that's it.
All right. I forgot something too, sorry. Um, for the I so that I I won't remember. But one of the members of the Arts and Culture Committee, Andrea, and I don't I her last name is escaping me. She was chosen to be the artist in residence for the Colorado, I think it was Colorado State Parks. So she gets to like spend a year, a full year. So, yeah, I don't know if we I would love to congratulate her, like if we can, I don't know if we can include that. It's a big deal, like she was chosen out of.
Well, we can do a presentation too.
Very cool. Yeah, yes, I feel bad that I forgot that, because that was a really exciting, really cool thing. She just kind of threw out there at the end and it's a big deal turns out, so, yeah. And I would love to at least acknowledge that.
Yeah.
One of our fruit artists was chosen. Yeah. Sorry. I was excited.
City update, can we get can we put that in?
Yeah.
No, I had nothing.
All right, Janine?
The downtown advisory board meeting was canceled. As you stated, we approved a new member of the livability commission tonight, which we will well. We're recommending actually the council, it will be brought to council at a later date. Anyways, that's all I have nothing else.
GJ meets tomorrow morning at 7:30. We've reopened up the opening for a new executive director, so we'll get updates on that.
Who's driving all these people away? And don't say Greg King.
I have no independent recollection of that one. This is the third. I attended my first Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce meeting, big shoes to fill. I took my oath of office. We discussed for more for other candidates for the board. We spent a fair amount of time talking about the Fruta Area Chamber Foundation. The goal on that this year, they awarded three scholarships and talked about kind of how to develop the plan to increase of what they can do for scholarships next year. Had a fair amount of conversation about workforce workforce development and the challenges around that. Trying to think if there's anything. Talked a lot about the events coming up. But that was pretty much it. There was some comments made about how my city report was half the time of yours. However, I missed one of the city meetings, so there's still room to expand it for the next.
We're good, I'm glad to hear that. Mine is more than asking questions.
Don't they have a meeting coming up that they're wanting kind of some public comment on the Fall Festival? What you I know like there was a Facebook post about it, and then I think they said invited. But I can't remember the date.
Right, that they're trying to recruit members. But no, that was not part of the discussion.
They didn't talk about it. I'm just trying to remember what that date was.
That's it for me.
All right, well, thanks. The only one I have to report on is Mike and I did the State of the Valley last week. So I think that went really well. So it was a good opportunity, kind of. Yeah. I'm glad Mike always does a good job of giving me bullet points. And the question I had, the main question I had, they had to slide over because everybody took so long to talk. So that worked out pretty well for me. But other than that, yeah, that's all I have. And then we did have the Chamber Appreciation Lunch today. And so I saw a lot of staff was there. I was there, I was wondering where our liaison was for the chamber. But we won't go into that one because I talked twice as long, so. We'll move on. All right, that's all we've got for council reports and actions. So with that, we need a motion to move into executive session.
Did you take a?
Well, we can take a break. You want to well, we move into executive. Do we take a break before we move into call the move? No. We'll call the move into executive session, then take a five-minute break. No, you can't have a break. Okay, but I'm going to I'm going to call I'm going to call a five-minute recess, five to seven-minute recess before we go into executive session.
That was the best thing I've ever seen.
Nine nine twenty. Nine twenty.
That was phenomenal.